It being six o'clock, I'll call to order the October sixth special meeting in the planning board. Beginning with the roll call Scott South, I am here, Michael York.
Yeah.
Jane Johnson.
Here.
Michael Day. Brandon Self.
Here.
Richard Lane.
Here.
And Ken Colby. And Steve Malone.
Here.
Okay, now let's see, I'm gonna seat Steve for Michael Day. And our agenda tight, there's only one thing on the agenda being a so special meeting. And that's a public meeting and it's a reconsideration determination of planning board number two, two dash zero, one, seven site plan approval for Lane Field. That's a tax map twenty four lots two, two dash one and four located in the residence district. Conditional slight plan approval was granted by the planning board on September eighth, twenty twenty two. Upon a finding by the board that the approval need be reconsidered, a public hearing will be scheduled for a time and date certain. And last on the item is adjourned. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna discuss whether um. Richard's concerns on the site plan warrant a special meeting to, I'm not a special meeting reopening of the public hearing of the lane field. And to see whether or not there would have been a different outcome on that site plan. If those are brought up. And Richard, what are your, what we're gonna do, actually, just, we're gonna discuss Richard's concerns before we make any motion on whether we're gonna do it, yes or no, whatever. So there's a board, we're gonna discuss all the concerns Richard has and to see if it looks like it would have changed the outcome of that, that site plan. And Richard was at the selectmen meeting last night, I was there for a little while.
I was on Zoom at about twenty of or so quarter of.
And you were at it too.
Done. It was.
So selecting, they approved the plant, so it's, it's through the selectmen, they, there are a few minor alterations which Richard will probably share with us, there he has a map, I see. But other than that, they have given them their approval. So Richard, you're off.
The. My concerns are that we announced viewing or have viewed three different presentations. For this site and there's gonna be a fourth because of what was presented last night at the selectmen's meeting. You know, my, my feeling or my concern is that we still don't have concrete. Plans from Cal Ripken. Baseball as to what is actually going to be there. And I, I would like to have us. I would like to have the, the ability to have all of their, all of their changes. Put on a plat so that we can view them in total because it's been piecemeal since we, since we started this and it's changed considerably. Today, after the discussion last night where Chad. Mentioned that there's gonna be a hundred and forty foot. Section of the west field that's going to be temporary fencing. Okay, so I went out there today and took a couple of pictures. Of the sliding hill and the existing fence line, which is. Some, something to this effect right now on west field and this is, I don't know if you can see it. This is the existing fence line, that's the right, left field foul pole. This is best as I, best that I can present is the existing fence line. As you can see, what they're proposing is a permanent fence up to a certain point, which is not yet been determined. And then a hundred and forty foot section open or temporary fencing so they can take that down with the sliding in the, in the future. Okay. I wish that thing would stay on. But there's an. Okay, and then I have another picture here. A hundred and forty feet out from that existing fence. And this is the right hand side of that sliding hill. And. You can see right here. This is my tape measure, this is a hundred and forty feet out. Did you see this comes down and that would be the end of the permanent fence? Which to me poses, poses a danger because they're gonna be coming down, they're gonna be going this way or that way or whatever. And that, that has a concern of two hundred feet out. Then you have ample room from this exists, this existing fence. To get well beyond that right hand edge of the sliding hill. Okay, and that with the, this particular. Presentation. With the soccer field this way, you know, then you have a permanent fence going on from there on out. My concern also is if they have this fence come up. In this way and break it. There's that one sliver on that hill on the left hand side of that hill that is used for sliding also, that would put them right directly into that fence.
So you think that the, the gap that they've shown here, that hundred forty foot gap will sick, we'll call it, should be larger, should be from there over to there, should be a larger one.
It should be, yes, extending out, I'm sorry, extending out along. The, this fence line here, if you come over two hundred feet. Then you're well beyond. The right hand edge of that sliding hill and even if kids come down and you know, they, they turn, there's your toboggan or whatever, they're not that. They're gonna be well with inside that permanent fence line. Okay, I don't know, it's gonna all.
So are you. Let's take the record, can I just ask you, are you saying that the temporary fencing should be two hundred feet?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're saying right now they're going from here to here removable and you want to make it to go over to where you have that blue line drawn in right there?
Yes, the, the.
You also said that they slide right where on that pin.
Okay, there's, there's a sliver of that hill, the left hand side that that comes down here.
Yeah.
And if this fence is permanent here.
So wouldn't they just run into the fence there though, if they stopped it there?
No, it's, that is far enough back. Towards the existing field that they don't run into that. And this, this mark here is basically arbitrary because I, I don't know specifically where, where the thing is going to start, where, you know, and where the, where the end. My, my suggestion is that they go two hundred feet from this line extending that line out. And coming two hundred feet this way to the right, right field line would give us ample room safety for the, for the sledding. My other. Point or concern is in all the discussions that they've given us, they want two hundred and twenty feet. From home plate out to the outfield because that's Cal Ripken.
That's the guidelines for the size of the field.
No, that's no, this, this is, this is for.
Home plate.
From home plate to, to the fence line according to Chad Bannon. And John, that is the new requirement for Cal Ripken for an official field. Okay, so that arc is inside the permanent fence or the removable fence, what are they going to put in here? For a fence line, is that going to be temporary also? And that would be also on this side over here on the O'Brien.
I think what you're asking is there gonna be a double fence in there because of their, there are their two hundred, what is it, two hundred?
Two hundred and twenty feet.
Two hundred and twenty foot arc, you say, that's the extent of their field, that's their, is that their home run line or something like that?
That's, that's what I'm interpreting, that's what they're suggesting.
If there's gonna be a fence at that home run line, I think is what you're asking, okay, and we don't know that because they don't show it on here.
They don't show that on there.
Okay, so we can ask them that, but we don't know what, what we're discussing here so far anyways are changes that they made. Actually, per selectman and per neighbors too, but I know the planning board also asked them if they would consider putting a removable fence right in that area there someplace, not, we didn't tell them where, but there, but again, we're discussing changes that they've made. And the selectmen approved and that they still have to come in for a compliance hearing and that would be part of that compliance hearing there. If they've added something.
We need to know what they, they're complying with, you don't have that.
Well, no, when, we know they have to comply with the conditions that the planning board set, the specific conditions that, that the planning board set when we approved it.
Right.
And they have to show, there are a few things that they had left out on the drawing, I think extension of the fence.
Extension here.
They wanted to show, they didn't show where, or I think the road thing might have been different that, you know, those were the things that they needed to show on the plat at the planning board approved.
We still don't have them.
Oh, we, yeah, but we, they haven't had a compliance hearing yet, they haven't scheduled one yet, they will schedule one, otherwise they don't get it signed in.
And the last time that we spoke with them, this was supposed to be coming out, the section was gonna be grass, there's now going to be a ten foot wide. According to Chad, ten foot wide crush gravel or something like that through there.
Yeah, they originally had it set for something like that and then for someone's suggestion, they took it, took it away, I think.
Wasn't it for fire personnel, emergency personnel that they requested to be able to drive their rigs through there?
That was there originally, but they also, I guess, said that initially that it didn't have to be gravel or crushed gravel in there and that you could put grass in.
Right.
But that's changed and that, that was brought up last night. The other thing that was brought up is now they want to put a permanent fence from these two dugouts. On the right field line and the left field line all the way out. To their proposed outfield permanent fence.
Next to divide the two fields, right? Because there's a field here and a field there, so they want to run a fence there separating the two fields. Didn't he say that at the last meeting that we had, that they were in there?
No.
I thought that he did.
No, you didn't. And. My, you know, my question is why does that have to be permanent and are they going to run two fences because you have to come off the dugouts? You know, all these other.
That'll have to be in right, that'll have to be in the drawing that they bring to their compliance hearing whenever they're gonna bring it. All of that stuff is gonna have to be and the exact placement of where this gap is gonna be, it'd be best if we let them know our, our wishes or concerns before they come in for compliance hearing. And if they could change it to that wider gap, they probably have an easier time in here, I would think. And that would, that addition of that fence, I don't know that it's any kind of a deal breaker, but it has to be on the plat if they want to put it on there and we don't have to let them have it on there, we don't want them because it wasn't part of our conditions. But.
And the others, you understand, another thing that was. Changed is the locations of the soccer field or soccer fields. But I, excuse me, yes, soccer fields because they're gonna take this soccer field and they're gonna put it here. Going this way and then incorporate. What was down in, in Lane Field. Figuring somehow to fit, configure it into these remaining fields, we don't know, you know.
But in those, in those things, in my opinion anyways, they aren't really changing anything there, yeah, they're changing some lines on the land, the land isn't changing, it's the same thing, it's just that it's a soccer field instead of a.
Soccer field just has two, two goals at either end.
You know, those changes there, we need to, you know, all those things we need to discuss with them, especially this, this has changed and that's changed. And yeah, we can discuss with them about that soccer field if it makes any difference, I'm not sure that it does or not. And yeah, we can discuss with them that road there. But what we have to determine tonight, we have to go over your concerns, but we have to determine tonight from the concerns is where the planning board aired in their judgment or in their approval of that site plan. And if it was enough to warrant a reopening of the hearing. You know, we have to decide that, we can't really open up, reopen the public hearing, in my opinion anyways, reopen up the public hearing. For minor things, we have to show that the board aired for some reason. Now, whether it was zoning reasons or, or rules reasons or whatever the heck it was, and if the board did error, then the board can decide whether to hold a public hearing or not. And if the board does not decide to hold a public hearing, it can still be petitioned to the court within the thirty days. But we're at, at that part now, and again, like I say, these are items, I think we need to discuss at the compliance hearing. And Sarah can convey those concerns to the applicant, you know, before they come in for their compliance hearing. But. Again, we're trying to determine whether we're gonna have a public hearing or not. Well.
I think there are enough minor changes to warrant a public hearing, reopen the hearing because collectively. They become a major change.
In which, in what way, I'm, I'm just gonna interrupt you for a second because the planning board asked the selectmen if they would consider doing that, we couldn't force them to put in a temporary fence there, but we strongly suggested to the selectmen that they considered as well, put it in and they've done that. So it's, it's a change that the planning board was actually in favor of, this fence down here, I don't remember whether they have brought it up in another meeting or not. And, and the position of where the soccer fields are isn't really anything major that I can see either, it's, it's flat land there.
Would it be helpful if I get out the plan that was approved?
Yeah.
Yeah. An awful lot that. RL has mentioned that is not on the plan that we saw, there's been so many changes.
But it, but it will be, you know, there will be additions to that plan because they have to come in again for that compliance, Sarah's getting the plan that we looked at, but they will have to come in with all the changes that are conditions that we asked them to put on there, otherwise, right, it doesn't get assigned approval. We.
What we have approved is not what they're gonna do yet. We haven't seen what they're really gonna.
The majority of what we approved, the majority of it is gonna be done, the majority, you know, the big improvement parking especially for one and delineating. And delineating all the parking, you know, fixing those problems, it's, all the improvements are going to be done there.
They still have not shown the movement of this.
No, but they don't have to until they bring a plan in for the compliance here and that's part of the condition.
Well, this is the original plan that.
This is the one we approved.
Yes.
And yeah, that was one of the conditions there that that be moved down here. That condition there, condition that there was a fence line up here that needed to be shown on the drawing that was extended.
That's seventy five feet.
Others in there too.
I have all the conditions if you want me to read.
I would, yes.
They're saying, they're talking about the fence between the two.
It's gonna, let's hear the conditions. Okay.
Okay, destroying conditions. No longer a central gravel road, there'll be grass. Show gates with access to north fields unplanned. Move south parking lot entrance west by thirty to forty feet. Move fence northerly away from the parking next to west field to expand speculative viewing area. Note seventy five foot extension of fence on cut drive on plat. Applicant to return for a compliance hearing and driveway permit from the state of New Hampshire must be acquired.
Thank you, yeah, that, that clarifies it. Okay, so those are all the conditions that we asked them for and when they come back for the drawing, those things have to be on that drawing. And per the selections meeting last night, I would have to think that these things, these items would be on that drawing as well, the removable part of the fence rather than this, this fence is.
Just make a mention, the reason that gravel, that Chad brought up gravel is a concern that it's all grass, that people will put tents or chairs and things and kind of place themselves there. And that's inappropriate, they don't want people to do that, so then he thought, well, maybe if we add a path of gravel, that's what he was bringing up, the safety reasons for keeping people onto that area.
And I don't think the planning board objected one way or another, whether it was gravel or not, because they had shown it originally with gravel, it was just someone, I, maybe some of the. Butters or someone, but anyway, it looks like it's gonna be gravel again and again, that wasn't a big. Point of contention for the planning board.
Not that it's major, not that it's a major issue, but with gravel, I'm thinking that's gonna hurt the knees.
He talked, he talked about a gravel path, not, not a gravel.
Yeah, we can still slide on gravel path, Denise.
He mentioned the ten feet wide.
Did he say it was ten feet?
Yes, that would be so that they could bring in a vehicle.
It's still, he's showing twenty feet wide here.
Yes.
And that's, you know, the plan we looked at, so, traveling center of that, so with all those conditions there. What would we have changed or what could we have erred by and would have changed this plan significantly to warrant reopening of the public hearing, not a compliance hearing, but a public hearing to go over the site plan? If anything, that's what we're here, here to decide tonight.
We have these two, so it looks like two, this short distance ten.
Go right there.
Fences, yeah. Okay. Are they going to continue out two fences all the way out, one fence all the way out, or is it gonna be temporary fencing?
Again, again, that's a compliance hearing issue when they come back in for us, because we didn't know about that one right there until last night.
We, okay, so we can expand on that.
Yep. Yeah, because that wouldn't have been on this plan here and, and it probably, if they're gonna put it on there, it'll probably be on their new plan that they bring that and also where, where this gap is supposed to be. And we can also talk to them about that as well. You know, bringing it down here, maybe if it's gonna be removable, then. And it, it makes sense to remove it more down here and then I don't think they would have a problem with, they gotta put removable in there anyway.
What's another, whatever you're talking, fifty feet or whatever it's gonna be.
Yeah, but again, that's, that's something for when they come back in for the compliance hearing.
Okay. Going along with that. I don't, this was a suggestion that was put up and I, I spoke to you about this this morning, the site plan review. Can be piggybacked.
Oh yeah, so you mentioned, Richard mentioned that, you mentioned that we could have a site plan review after the compliance hearing?
No, I was.
Or did I miss something to speak?
I was wondering if they would need a site plan modification hearing to be adding, you know, more fence down the little field and that sort of thing.
And they might, if, if the planning board decides at the compliance hearing that they have to come back for a modification, if that's more than a minor modification, whatever they're doing there. Then, yeah, we can make them come back for that, but again, it's, it's a public hearing just for that modification, it's not a public hearing opening up the whole field that I would think, unless the planning board thinks otherwise.
And the piggybacking was just that we would only give notice once and we'd have one hearing, close it and then have the second hearing.
Oh, you're talking about the same meeting.
The same meeting, that's, that's what I was getting at.
It makes, that makes sense for the applicant for sure, instead of dragging it out, have them come back twenty times, it does make sense.
What, what? Um.
So.
Again, I'm, I'm personal, go ahead.
Let's have them do that, actually, because that would open it up for all the discussion on this, you know, compliance hearing is pretty much only for those items that we made them comply to. And if they're modifying something which they are, then I think it would be a good idea to have them, as Sarah suggested, schedule a modification for the site plan after that compliance hearing or perhaps before the compliance hearing. You can say we have conditions on that, I don't know, although now it's just these two things, it probably makes more sense to get one thing out of the way and then do the other.
We, we assume that it's only gonna be, but then we, we kind of had.
That it's only gonna be one. What do you mean? Those things, yeah, well, we've got them with a site plan now, we've never had them with a site plan before. Good, and this is a regular business as any other businesses, if it were Market Basket, for instance. And they had a fence problem in there, whatever you want to call it. We root, wouldn't really be able to dictate to them where to put that fence, other than what our ordinance might say, like within two feet of the property line, yeah, you have to have it there and it has to be a certain height, it has to be this or that. But we would not really be able to dictate to them that they have to put it like this or two hundred feet in there or with an opening or any of that stuff. Shouldn't have that authority and we don't have that authority, but these guys apparently are open to a reason in that. So again, if we have them come in for a modification, which it clearly is a modification, it's minor, but it's a modification, both of those things, then I think that is a cleaner way to settle it. I think that's a good idea, what, what does anybody else think?
I have a question, if this was say Market Basket. And they're looking to build that giant store and they have the whole giant layout of the building and the parking lot and all that. And then you guys were, we approved their site plan as it was. And then they said, oh, well, actually, we want to put a fence on dividing from the Market Basket side to where like Sears is. If they wanted to put a fence straight down the parking lot, would you make them come back and redo everything, even though you guys, we already. Approved their site plan and stuff, would you do that in their case too?
We'd probably have them come in for a modification because it's something large, especially Market Basket, something like that, we'd probably have them come in for a modification because it would be something that would be on the, the site plan. Even though fences are fences, but still, I think we would, anybody else think we would or wouldn't?
I would say you'd have.
We have done stuff like that before, yeah.
Yeah.
Modification site plan.
So then if he's looking to extend that fence in between the two dugouts all the ways down, then yeah, he should come back for the site plan modification.
And it gives a planning board the opportunity to discuss it as well as discuss this part of it as well, right there.
Okay, if, if we get into the site plan modification, are we limited? As to what we could possibly bring up again.
We can bring a lot of stuff up, we can bring anything up we want really, but I think we're limited as to what we can make them do. It would be limited to, to actually deciding yes or no about this fence and yes or no about the placement of that one.
Okay, and. They're still.
If I'm wrong. Pipe up.
No, I believe that we're limited to the modifications that they present or request.
We can discuss other things, but, but as far as having them do something.
Okay.
I think we should enumerate what we want them to show on the site plan. So that we see it and then that's saying, oh, well, we're gonna change this, we're gonna change that. And, oh, I like that idea, let's take your idea and try to, try to. Get a.
We have, we have, we have with the, the compliance hearing because they know what they have to do to change this site plan to adhere to our conditions with the compliance and another thing, you know, move that fence there, bring one up here, move that down there, you know, the other things that we mentioned and they, when they bring that site plan in, it has to show those things on there. But it looks like it's going to show the one afterwards, if we have a, half of the compliance hearing, if we have a public hearing for a modification, then that plan is also gonna show. If they want to put it, a fence there and whatever they're doing to this fence over here.
So.
So.
So if, if on, you guys tell him that if he wants to put that one fence in, in between the two dugouts extending the full length because he didn't do that to begin with. That it's gonna be right back to square one and he says, oh, never mind, then forget about it, then do we, do we still need to have him come back in?
What do you mean back to square one?
You know, you're saying that he has to come back in for a site plan review modification if he wants to put in the fence in between the dugouts to go straight back.
Yeah.
So that'll reopen up the public hearing and everything all over again, it'll basically be starting back to square one.
No, no, it'll be just on, on the fence and just on the other modification over there. That's, yeah, we can discuss that, but we, we can't change it on them unless they want to change something, but again, they have to come back with a revised drawing, but it's just gonna be on the modifications. When they come in and it looks like since the selectmen approved it with these two things on here, they probably kind of have to put them on there, they could leave this fence out if they wanted, but I think they're gonna have to put that on there.
Did, did they approve what Richard was speaking about the two hundred as opposed to the hundred?
They, they not that.
A hundred and forty.
For, for the opening, but you're talking about the two hundred foot from the plate, home plate out, is that what you're talking about?
The two, two twenty or something. Hundred feet in order to satisfy the safety.
Temporary fence.
Are you talking about two hundred, but, no, they didn't, I think it was a hundred and forty, a hundred and forty, okay, so. The, it's like gonna prove that for the hundred and forty. Now that's getting into a, a finding whether the selectmen has them, I mean, whether the planning board says, well, no, we want it two hundred and twenty feet, if they gotta go back to the selectmen for that, I wonder, I don't know about that. They will, okay, so it'd be bounced down over there.
Any, either board makes the change, the other board.
Has to approve that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And. Listening to them last night, actually, I don't think that that would take up much of their time.
The selectmen you're talking about, yeah, probably not, it'd probably just be in and say, well, the plan board said we have to do that and it'd be yes or no, something like that.
If it's safer, I think it should be done.
Well, the, the whole idea is to make it accessible to sledding and it makes sense if, if, you know, if they can bring that fence, put the cut there, makes sense, they could put the cut back there and, and you can see how the hill, you can see it right there, so it would run into that.
Right, and after all, it's sort of uses the whole, the area all year, it's a recreation center type thing.
And since we recommended something like that be done anyway.
Yeah.
Or to, if they, if they, if they were things.
You know, all these changes and everything, wouldn't it be?
You know, all these changes and everything, wouldn't it be great if we could have just all gone out there and looked at it in the beginning with them? And had them lay out to us what it was gonna be like and then put it on paper. Wouldn't it be easier to see?
We'd have still had that change because they didn't wanna put that removal.
But I mean, I I haven't been to the ball field since like maybe nineteen eighty.
Probably about the time when I was playing there, you mean?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, definitely. Especially when the weather's good.
It's rec center, not a entertainment.
So, it's, well, what shall we do? We know they're coming in for a compliance hearing. I think it's a good idea that they come in for a modification the same night. With the modification hearing right after that.
So that versus having a complete. Because it would be incorporated, again, as as long as we have the flexibility. You know, to on that and the temporary fencing. And the ability to discuss other items if they present something. Again, different than what we're looking at here tonight, other than what we've, you know, the temporary and that permanent. If they do, then then we're gonna, my feeling is we're gonna have to go to a complete overhaul.
Yeah, we'll see what they bring in then with their compliance hearing.
Little thing is, we've, have they mentioned how they're gonna delineate these spaces?
I don't think it was specific. They're gonna line them. Um, and but I don't think they're gonna permanently line them because it's it's gravel.
Right.
It's not paved, so they have to line them with lime or something.
Nobody ever mentioned putting like those big railroad tie things down the middle. I thought they did.
And they were gonna mark the ties.
Yeah.
They're gonna do that on the street side too. I, you know, we don't know.
No, that, this was their split rail fence stuff.
Yeah, but you still have to have a delineation of. Otherwise.
Maybe they'll, maybe they planned to delineate them on this.
And they've they've shown on the plan that they're delineated, so. I guess technically code enforcement could go down there and say, with this plan and say, where are those lines? And they'd have to put them in, you know, planning board can't do that, but code enforcement can do that. But, yeah, since they, it finally shows where they are on the plans and they are marked on the lines on the plans, then yeah, the. The town definitely has the authority to go down there if they didn't do it, to make them put it on. And whether that.
You might guys might be interested to know that the board of selectmen agreed on a new position. The planning department for a planning coordinator, code enforcement and planning coordinator. That hasn't been filled, but they agreed on the position, so there will be help for code enforcement to monitor.
What does that mean? What is a coordinator? That's all it is, is a floating, floating person, a floating.
He's gotta go out on all these places that need a lot of work and take care of them too, so.
It's whatever.
To the selectman about every time I go there.
Sarah and Mike, whatever.
Like their assistant then, right? All right, so that might help a little bit, you know. We'll see.
I wanna come back to this. Are we telling them that they have to have the two hundred foot, hundred and forty foot?
We're gonna discuss it. I think we should let them know that we're leaning towards the, you know, that opening being wider over there than not. And we're gonna discuss it in that modification there. You can let them know that.
Yeah, I should know that. And I'd also like to let them know what to bring so that they could potentially leave with a fully approved.
Okay.
Plan.
Let's, let's.
Suggest they bring this version with the, all the conditions added to it. And then a second version with the modifications that they brought. To the select board, superimposed over the corrected version of this. Does that?
Okay, and 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 we're though.
Two things.
We're probably gonna suggest that they make that.
That they make opening.
Two hundred feet.
So, I would, yeah, I would say, and Richard has a dimension on there and actually lines, we could. You know, mine, we can pass that along to them just to show what we're talking about, that the, you know, down where that tree tree line is somewhere. Yeah.
Yeah, the.
Yeah, you can mark it on this.
Okay, yeah, mark on it.
Just roughly, okay, roughly, there's a. Existing fence there, okay. And what we would like is for from this point. Here. Two hundred feet. This way. Okay, and that would, you know, that would come out to about here.
So let's bring that up there, because they're gonna think that we want a fence across that.
So we're gonna go. This.
Yeah. Or, so put an arrow right there, an arrow right here like this.
Yeah, and back to.
And an arrow right there like that, and that would be the removable part.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that that gives us the safety.
Yeah.
Uh, margin for the hills, okay. And then the other thing is this. Through here.
Yeah, which they will, yeah, they'll bring that to, so these, these will be on their. Proposal for a modification to their site plan. This is what they need to bring like that. And then if we approve that, if they bring it in like that, now we approve that. Then that's one more trip for them back to the selectmen to approve that extended part right there.
I have a dumb question.
Well, don't ask it.
Okay, kids can run into the polls.
Go ahead. What are we talking about?
Where the permanent fencing ends and the removable fencing starts. What kind of a hole or fixture is the permanent fencing going to end with? Is it gonna be?
It's a metal.
So, okay, so it's gonna be a metal pole that these guys to run into.
Bullseye on it.
Put a bumper on it.
Guard against everything that can happen.
No, but you can, you can discuss it and we say, we're not gonna worry about it. And it's the first time somebody has mentioned that.
If I'm the person that's there, I'm gonna put a sign that says, just slide at your own risk.
Well, you can put a pad on and go courtesy of Steve.
Wasn't adequate enough, I assure you.
Yeah.
We are so happy.
I suppose to roll off before I hit the creek.
Yeah, that's what we're supposed to do too, right? Before we wind the road at the bottom of the hill.
But there was a kid. Didn't roll off in time and he got run over.
Okay, so this is what we have. And I think it sounds like everyone's pretty much in agreement. Again, I will lay it out again, that they come back for a compliance hearing and they have everything on there that we asked for in the conditions. And then they come back five minutes later with the modification to the site plan that shows these modifications right here. And we have a public hearing on that and hash it all out. That's what's gonna happen then and see what they end up with. And not have a a public hearing reopening and the whole thing.
And they can't change it again.
They could, you know, come back for a modification and the planning board can either approve it or not, you know, it's a, the planning board may not.
They're very anxious to get going on some of the construction.
I should think.
Back last night, they asked the selectmen if they could get started. I don't, I don't remember what.
But they couldn't get started?
They could get.
They can.
They can get started on this stuff.
That's pretty crazy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the select board.
Oh, my, I can give you the motion.
What are they gonna do to get started?
They wanted to, I think, for dugouts. Faces. The paths, I mean, for the dugouts.
Yeah, I think they're talking about in our meeting, right? They're gonna lay out a field at a time as they went along.
Yeah, that that's.
Yeah.
Because once they, once they've started, say, with O'Draine. That throws everything else off that in here.
Well, they they said they have the, had to have the parking in first, so at some point there.
Do much on the fields right now because I got soccer going on.
You're right, no, they can't do anything.
But they could do, well, I don't know, they must use that for parking now then.
Yes, they do.
So if they can start on something, it probably, I would guess, would be parking, which is not really.
Well.
A big deal.
As I say, the lane field is in here and they're using that for soccer now, so they can't do a heck of a lot.
They'd have to move their soccer.
You know, they were.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's just not scrupulous.
All right, we need a motion, motion that says, let me think, motion that says. That either a motion for a rehearing and we, you know, the motion doesn't, motion doesn't pass. Or a motion that says that we decided not to have a rehearing. And that we will have a public hearing for a modification of the site plan right after their compliance hearing. That might be a better way to put it, that they put it all in one, one motion that says that the. Uh, planning board would require the applicant to come in with a modified site plan. To be presented right after they they.
Show the compliance.
Yeah, right after the compliance hearing and they haven't set a date for the compliance hearing, I guess, you don't know, so motion has to be open ended like that. I'm guessing. So is that that too confusing or do we need to reword that a little bit?
Well, I have a site plan modification hearing following the compliance hearing on the same date.
Yes, same day. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, it doesn't specify a time.
No, because we we don't know anything about it yet.
Following.
Yeah, following it. Perfect, okay. And Michael York makes that motion. Is there a second seconded by Richard Lane? Is there any further discussion?
By the way, it's also part of that here, that motion is to not have a rehearing.
That is correct. Right in the beginning was not to, the planning board is voting not to have a rehearing. And any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Or opposed. And, okay, and I guess we'll be back.
So since there is a public hearing with that, it's gonna have to be at least two weeks' notice.
Yeah.
Yep, and they haven't even come in with their modifications, not my compliance drawing. But they probably are gonna be starting on this, I would guess, before they come back.
Like I said, they could.
They could, and and I don't know. Parking. But at least they gotta do it to this. If they start something, it's gotta look like this. It can't look like anything.
I know, but I mean, if there, if there's a game.
Yeah, they will. But at some point, it's gonna be much better with that.
I'd like to see him get it nailed down.
What the town is doing about trying to get rid of that, that passing zone along ball fields.
We discuss it one of our meetings, I think, about the speed limit there. I don't know about having them with the speed limit. And the planning board can present a letter to the DOT, but that's.
I thought the.
A selectman have to, any speed on us, on changes on a highway has to be petitioned by the select.
Oh, not the planning board can't do that.
No, no, it has to come through the select.
Wasn't something mentioned also?
They just did the, well, they just did the one over Holbrook.
Yeah, but wasn't something mentioned also about that passing zone that's that's now there?
Yeah.
About getting rid of that.
Yeah, they could make that request at the same time.
Yeah.
Any traffic on a state highway that we wanna change, has to go through DOT, of course, and the selectmen have to do it. What we can do as a board is write a letter encouraging that selectmen to take that step. Since we're all town residents.
And and we should anyways, if the selectmen are gonna do it, they should show that the boards back them up and doing so.
Instead of me just beating them up all the time, I'll beat them up.
And the reasons for doing so could be the modifications of those field, that field right there. All right.
I thought I heard somebody say that the DOT didn't think we needed to.
They probably always think.
To the town, when the town itself speaks, they will listen.
Yeah, so.
And sometimes when they listen to you.
Does. Well, there's. There being nothing else on the agenda than a motion for adjournment would be in order.
That's my motion.
Makes a motion for adjournment and that's seconded by Brandon. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. And we are adjourned.